Welcome to our August eighteenth Select Board meeting. I'd like to take a roll call of members present. Frank West here. Kevin Tyree is absent tonight, but we have a quorum of four out of five. So with that, if you'd like to get everyone to please rise and sit right up high. I'd like to begin the meeting with a moment of silence for a former town official, John Callen, who recently passed away in Centerville, Massachusetts. According to his obituary says that his adopted child in Wilmington, Massachusetts, John was active in many civil organizations, including chairman of the building committee, where he was instrumental in building the
... library. He was elected town moderator in Wilmington, a position he held proudly for thirteen years. So with that, I'd like to ask my fellow board members and public to give a moment Thank you very much. Okay. We'd like to have the, we're going to review and sign payroll bills, payable warrants out of session. So with that-
Make motion.
With that, I'd like for the July twenty-ninth, is that your motion, sir?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Four with one absent. We also have the, I'm sorry, the minutes were out, were out of July twenty-ninth, my apologies. So is there a motion to approve the minutes as of July twenty-ninth?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Just go to you, right? All in favor? Four zero. Okay, appointments. Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, one of the things, my apologies, one of the things was is that we're not going to have a discussion on the Bezelle Senior Center tonight. That was a decision that I made earlier in the weekend. So it's on the agenda, but the Bezelle Senior Center is not going to be discussed tonight. So if anybody was here solely for that, my apologies for not getting notification out earlier. With that, we do have a seven o'clock appointment, F. Alex Para, D. Augustine Levine Para and Nutburn, Public PCs, for a public hearing on the application to transfer and pledge of inventory and license of the all alcohol packaged store license of Shop Right Liquors Incorporated, doing business as Eli's Country Store, to OM Namah Shivay Corp., doing business as Eli's Country Store, property located at three eighty-one Middlesex Ave. I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Welcome.
Member of the board, my name is Alex Para. Attorney Attorney, I'm at the Applicant, OM Namah Shivay Corp. And with me is Mr. Atulak Krishna Patel, who is the sole shareholder of the corporation. Thank you. Also with us tonight are Michael and Melissa Elliott, who are the principals of The Cellar, just sitting right behind. I do have a small update to the application, which I just put in a letter form today. The update is that Mr. Patel, since we filed the application, Mr. Patel has moved and his principal residential address has changed, so I just wrote in the letter.
Thank you.
So, you know, principally, we're here to answer your questions. I can give you just a sort of a quick rundown of the proposed, you know, transaction. The sale documents were included with the application. OM Namah Shivay Corp., as the asset knee of Mr. Patel, will be purchasing the store in The Cellar, technically is Shop Right, a company. And separately, as a separate transaction through an LLC, Mr. Patel will be purchasing the real estate that accompanies the store. Property, as you mentioned, is at three eighty-one Middlesex Avenue. I just want to take a second to thank your staff for helping us, you know, through the application process. It was very helpful to us. So, you know, Mr. Patel is a resident of New Hampshire. He has considerable experience in the retail grocery business. In Massachusetts, he is the president of Donnellan's Markets, which is a chain, small chain of grocery stores in, you know, Whalen, Lincoln, Acton, Littleton, all with beer and wine licenses. And that's been an operation, I believe, it's now four or five years?
Four years.
Four years.
Four years.
And as part of his executive staff, he has two individuals working for him who will be directors of the corporation. So one is Matthew D., the other is Esmal Dilla. They also have experience, they worked in Donnellan's before Mr. Patel's became the president of the company. And as part of this application, Melissa Elliott is sitting behind, who's the current manager, under the current license we'll be staying on as the manager. I'm not sure the financial details are particularly relevant. They are set forth in the application materials that are submitted. There will be financing from Rockland Trust, and they are seeking a pledge of the license and the alcohol inventory as part of the financing of the transaction. So that's the summary. You know, if you guys have any questions, we're here to do the best we can to answer your questions and proceed from there.
Okay. Being a public hearing, we'll entertain questions from the board first, and then we'll entertain questions from the public. You seem to-
Yeah, just one quick clarification. You're going to buy the parking lot too, right? You didn't mention it, but I thought I saw the purchase agreement.
Well, it's all part of the, part and parcel of the same property. So there are three, I think there are three numbers.
Okay.
And that's, yeah, it's all-
It's three eighty-one, three seventy-nine, and the three eighty-three.
Yeah, it's three of them, that's right. Okay.
Anybody else? Mr. Palmer?
Are you planning major changes for the-
No, no changes at the store level, keeping same. And they are doing good job, so to change anything-
You have to understand that you're buying an institution.
Yeah.
You're buying an institution. Everyone goes to Eli's. And I wish you nothing but the best. I congratulate you both for over the years. What you've done is terrific. Thank you.
Ms. Bezelli?
That was going to be my question as well. Are the, I think this is, you know, very bittersweet as a resident, especially I live down the street and, you know, I've been going there for twenty-plus years myself. So glad to hear Melissa's staying on, and I take it Mike's going to retire, well deserved or whatever you may be doing. But are the workers staying on, kind of like business as usual? Is that the plan?
Yes, as usual. Who would like to stay on, they can stay on.
That's wonderful.
And we love to have them because they already have experience, so-
Right, right, right. And, and you know, as Mr. DePalma said, it's a well-oiled machine and everybody loves it. And honestly, I mean, I couldn't think of anything to change it, so don't fix it if it isn't broke. But, you know, we look forward to welcoming you to the neighborhood and, you know, seeing you there. You'll get to know everybody, so.
Thank you.
I guess first, I'll just make a comment to the Eli family. I've known you guys all my life. I bought candy there when it was a dime. That was two years ago, I think, maybe, three?
Yeah, a couple.
No, but I think, I agree with my fellow board members that, you know, that the Eli's Country Store has been an institution in Wilmington. A lot of people will say, you know, where do you live in relation to Eli's? You know, so a lot, you know, and as far as best meat in town and all that, so you got some pretty big shoes to fill, so I wish you well in the endeavor, provided that we, I don't know, actually, Mr. Mike and Melissa, would you like to say anything on?
No. I feel emotional. When we met these guys, we kind of, we were looking for someone that would actually do similar to what we do. So that was kind of why we met. I was talking to someone about possibly selling, and then I had mentioned a few different, you know, groups of stores that I thought would work out well.
Right.
And it happened to be that these guys were also looking, so when the gentleman that I was talking to, he's like, I think I know who I'm going to send your way.
That's good.
So, yeah, this wasn't, it's, we're not going out looking for the highest bidder in the world.
Right.
We don't care what happens. We honestly, you know, feel, you know, this town, we've lived in the town for our whole life. We got a hundred years in this town.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
My grandfather had the store, my father and uncle did it, and then we took over for the third location. So, as I said, we didn't jump into this with whatever happens.
Right, right, right. Yeah.
I commend you for that.
Yeah, definitely.
Anybody from the public like to make a comment? Okay, with that, oh, Mr. Manager, sorry, my apologies.
That's okay. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. First is, we did get positive recommendations from both the police department and the Board of Health during the transfer of the license. We did want to just clarify one thing. So in the pre-existing license that was issued, the, the current license has the square footage as nineteen forty-three square feet, which is the interior square footage where I believe the alcohol operation happens inside the building.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
And the, the new application listed sixty-six-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet, which I think is the, is the size of the full building.
That's, that's true.
So I just wanted to clarify whether or not it was your intention to, to apply for that larger amount and the, for possibly moving things around? Or was your intention to maintain the current layout and maybe switch it to the nineteen forty-three square?
It's the current layout.
So you're comfortable if we issued the nineteen forty-three square feet?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to-
Thank you.
Make that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No worries. Was there a motion to close? Oh, sorry, do you have a-
Nope. I was going to make a motion to close.
Close the public hearing?
Yes.
Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing? Okay. That said, is there a motion to grant the transfer of license?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Four zero. Thank you very much, sir. Welcome to Wilmington. And thank you very much to the Eli family for a hundred years of dedicated service to our town.
Nothing.
That's why she's saying.
I'm like, Melissa's there, it'll be fine. Yeah, when I saw that, I was like, yeah.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Wish you nothing but the best.
Yep.
Absolutely. With that, I'd like to bring forward Brian Poopa, Deputy Police Chief, and also Megan Souza. And probably Dan, the same thing?
No.
Megan, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, basically, Chief, Deputy Chief, we'd like to talk about a medical emergency that Officer Souza was involved in. If you could let us, give us some details?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for having us here today. We had a few more officers here in the crowd, but duty calls, and we can't predict when that is going to happen. I just want to recognize also with us is Lieutenant Scott Sensabaugh, joined us tonight, with a number of other officers from the department. Tonight, the chief wishes he could be here, but he is on a pre-scheduled vacation. We're here to recognize Megan Souza. Officer Souza has been with the department for well over five years and has done a great job with us. But we specifically want to recognize her answer in the medical call on July second. While serving in uniform patrol, Officer Souza was dispatched to a highly charged medical incident here in town where a woman was in premature labor. Officer Souza was one of the first officers on scene, one of the first medical responders on scene. And in that difficult circumstances, she stood up with her training, her experience, her calmness, her tremendous demeanor, and was successfully able to help that child to be born on that day. And following that, the paramedics expressed to the department how well Officer Souza did in that instance. And I just want to read something from Chief Desmond that he had wrote in his memo to you guys. Speaking of Megan, he said that her composure, compassion, dedication exemplify the highest standards of service and reflect a great credit upon herself, the Wilmington Police Department and the town of Wilmington. And certainly on that day, Megan was a true professional, and she was able to help that young woman and that child that was born in that day. And that's why we would like to recognize Megan Souza for her efforts that day.
Would you like to, you got the floor if you'd like to speak, Ben?
I don't really have much to say. It's a team effort. I think we had a very successful outcome due to everyone's efforts, so I'm glad I played a part in it and I could help.
Okay. Members of the board? Bill, Ms. Bezelli?
Sure, I'll go first. I mean, just thank you and congratulations. I know, you know, you don't, as you just said, you don't think of it as, you know, it's your job, right? You probably think it's what I'm doing, what I'm trained to do. But for civilians, I mean, that's amazing to us that, you know, to know that, you know, we have that support in you and your fellow officers and, you know, the fire department, paramedics, that, you know, when the time comes to truly, you know, be there in these emergencies and to help. And, you know, I read the letter from the father of the child and all that stuff, and it was actually getting me a little choked up. But it was, just seemed like, just reading it, you could tell how intense the situation was just from his letter. And it's just amazing. And, you know, to everybody, kudos to everybody, all the, the paramedics and everybody, first responders that were there. But, you know, from what he had said, you had done a tremendous job with the mom and just keeping her calm and just helping out. So just, thank you. You know, I, it's just very comforting to know. I mean, I think this is one of the best police departments anywhere anyway. But it just, it just proves that more, that we have such a great first responding team in Wilmington across the department. So just, just thank you. And, you know, it's just good to know that we have such wonderful people. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Congratulations. I hate to sound cold, but you did your job.
Yes.
And that's impressive. As we all know, we're all humans, and panic sets in real quick. What am I supposed to do? What am I not supposed to do? But by reading all this, you knew what to do, and you did it. And I congratulate you. It just goes to show that our officers in this town aren't there just to cause problems. They're there to solve problems. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes, I mean, first of all, just thank you for your service in general.
Yeah.
In general, right? And then in this situation, incredible job. I'm assuming you haven't delivered a baby before?
No. That was the first.
Right, so I figured that. So, yeah, just like, incredible job and congratulations.
Thank you.
I would imagine that when you get up in the morning and you put your uniform on, you have no idea what your day is going to be. Deputy Chief Poopa said there were several other officers here, and they were here to congratulate you and hear what's going on here, and they got called on a, on a, on a call.
Right.
And we don't know what that call is, but, you know, but again, it just shows the response of our police. So it's great when, you know, it's great to recognize, especially when something like this happens. But we do recognize our police, or at least I hope we recognize our police on a daily basis, as well as our fire and, and other first responders. So, but again, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you very much. With that, actually, Town Manager, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I, it's, it's, it's always gratifying to be able to sit in this room like this and congratulate someone for an amazing job. And so, on behalf of the town, we are proud to have you a part of the team and hope you will be here for a long time.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And with that, if you could step forward, we do have a certificate of recognition, I'll read it, certificate of recognition presented to Megan M. Souza for her professionalism, dedication, and compassion in response to a medical emergency on Wednesday, July second, two thousand twenty-five, presented this eighteenth day of August, two thousand twenty-five. Frank West Senior, Chair Select Board, and Eric Slagel, Town Manager. Handoff.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we'd also like to rec, we'd also like to recognize Sergeant Daniel Ferbush.
That's not me crying.
Deputy Chief, if you could take over the reins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sergeant Ferbush also exemplifies, you know, just what we have, the talent we have here at the Wilmington Police Department. And on a daily basis, he shows up and does a fantastic job, whether he's in uniform or not. In this one instance, he was not in uniform, he was not in Wilmington, but, you know, having the proper skills, having, you know, that, that attitude that he's going to help, you know, in any situation, Sergeant Ferbush stood out on this day, which happened to have been July fourth, and I asked him how he actually had July fourth on. But he did, and he was at a restaurant in a local community, and a young lady had a medical episode, and the staff wasn't quite sure what to do, her mother wasn't quite sure what to do, but Sergeant Ferbush, who was waiting that afternoon, stepped up and provided medical attention to that young woman successfully, and then realized when it was beyond what he could do, was smart enough to call nine-one-one and get the ambulance there. But, you know, as demonstrated here, our officers, they get great training in first responder, first aid. And that day, as I would never doubt, Sergeant Ferbush stepped up and helped that young lady in need. And the way we, he didn't come back to the station and make the announcement that, hey, guess what I did? The young, the young lady's mother, somebody had mentioned it on a social media site, and the young woman's mom specifically noted the calm reaction and helpfulness of Sergeant Ferbush that afternoon. So we want to rec, and actually, let me just speak to what Chief Desmond also said. You know, Sergeant Ferbush's actions speak volumes, even while duty, off duty, he demonstrated the same compassion, integrity, and readiness to serve that he brings to the Wilmington Police Department every day.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. Thank you for your service to not just this community, other communities, right, in general. It's a great job, and congrats.
Thank you.
Congratulations. So I don't know if I believe in coincidences too much, but clearly you took a day off for a reason. They needed you there, and just great job and congratulations. And I guess, you know, I guess when you're in your line of duty, you really don't ever have a day off because it's, I'm sure it's very instinctual for all of you to just jump in anytime you see that, whether you're wearing your badge or not, right? So, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. DePalma?
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you.
It shows one thing, the day you get sworn in, you're an officer twenty-four-seven. And this is perfect proof why these gentlemen, men and women, are trained like they are. Off duty, situation develops, and an officer responds. Why? Because of compassion. Why? Because of training. And I congratulate you immensely, Sergeant.
Thank you.
I think everyone's pretty much said it all, but again, you know, we go, you know, as residents, we all get up, go to work, don't think about, you know, what we're going to do the next day. We might have a day off, we go to, go to a coffee shop, have a cup of coffee. And if there's a problem, well, somebody else is going to take care of it. So it's, you know, thank you very much for being that person that took care of it. And there's not, there's not a lot else you can say, you know, other than, you know, thanks. And I know you're humble, it's not like, like you said, you didn't run around and say, hey, guess what I did on July fourth? So everyone else had a hamburger and a beer or whatever, and you potentially saved a life, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Town Manager?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, it's reassuring to me, and I think should be to everybody in town, that Sergeant Ferbush is the kind of quality that we have, training our officers. He's a sergeant, so he's leading by example, and again, we're lucky to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we also, so we have a certificate for yourself, so if you could step forward. Again, certificate of recognition presented to Daniel P. Ferbush for his professionalism, dedication, and compassion in response to a medical emergency on Friday, July fourth, two thousand twenty-five, presented this day, eighteen August, two thousand twenty-five, from the board. It's actually, you know, it's signed by me as the chair, but certainly recognizing the board as yours recognizes the board as well. And our Eric Slagel as our Town Manager. Again, thank you, Dan.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, and as we're talking to our, about our, you know, fairly seasoned officers, we'd like to also talk about the Wilmington Police Explorers achievement. On Stations Day, we'd like to, Deputy Chief, if you could bring our explorers on up and-
You can sit right here.
We can stand over here.
Yeah, that's fine. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me introduce you today.
Yes, please.
We have Officer Katie Goodwin, who is one of the chief instructors for the Explorer program in the department. We have Ella Cormier, who is a sergeant with the Explorer Department. Ella is a graduate of Wilmington High School, and she'll be going to Keene State College studying criminal justice. And she was also an intern with us this past spring. We have Ariana Fasulo, who has been with us for a few years now, and she is a, going to be a senior at Shawshank Tech. And we have Charlotte Warren, who is going to be a eleventh grader at Wilmington High School, who is also part of the Explorers program. Just real quick, update the Explorers program. We accept resident, or members from the age fourteen up to twenty-one, and the instructors generally train them. They have one instructional event every month, one training they come to, and they routinely help us with Memorial Day, Veterans Day, parades, Fourth of July, and they give back to the community. They're really a great group of individuals who join the program. And this year, they participated back in May, Stations Day, which was over at the Police Academy, and they get together and they do a bunch of, a bunch of stations that involve law enforcement. And on that day, we had, you know, they all participated, and we had two individuals that were successfully at Medallion, and that was Ella and that Ariana, who received an award for, it's called Arrest and- And that was Ella and that Ariana, who received an award for, it's called Arrest and Search. They placed third place in that event, which was very good on that afternoon. And also on that day, Ariana placed first place in judgment driving. So she was able to drive a police car through cones situationally and she was rated as the highest. And Charlotte was there as a strong teammate with them on that afternoon. And from what I understand, it was a great experience for them all and they displayed really excellent training and great capabilities that day.
Well, it sounds like the Explorers has, what?
Oh, no, I just said amazing. Sorry.
Sounds like the Explorers have been in existence for a while and this is the first time that we've brought home some awards. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes, this is the first year we had participated in it. It's been going on for a few years. Myself and Officer Ford, we just took over the program. So we did a little bit of digging, found it, and we signed our group up for it.
Would you ladies like to talk about your experience? Why don't you, you know, why don't you get to the microphone or, so we can all hear?
Our experience with like Stations Day or Police Explorers?
Yes.
Okay. Well, first off, being a part of Police Explorers has been like an amazing experience.
Excuse me just a second, state your name, please.
Oh, sorry, my name is Ella Cormier.
There you go, thank you.
Police Explorer Sergeant. But being in the program has been great. I think we all love it and everyone else who's a part of it. It's such a great learning experience for all of us. And even Stations Day was such a great learning experience. Some of the things we participated in, we didn't really have much background in, but being able to participate in and get feedback from like what we were doing wrong, what we needed to work on and stuff, was like an amazing experience for all of us.
Great. And would one of your ladies like to change chairs for a second? First your name.
Ariana Fasulo. I definitely think that it's a good experience, especially if you don't know what you want to do in the future. I have a lot of fun there. It definitely teaches like a lot of discipline as well. We always need to show up on time, clean. They definitely prepare us for whatever we may need to be prepared for. We have a lot of fun. We do, as you said, we do a lot of the parades, we do the 4th of July. I love being a part of it, but yeah.
And I know one of the other things you're at is, is that when they do the flags and flowers over at the cemetery on Memorial Day. So you guys, I know are instrumental in guiding a lot of, a lot of our youth doing in that. And yourself?
My name is Charlotte Warren, Police Explorer. For me, being the Police Explorer has been a really fun experience. We've gained a lot of exposure on like real life experiences and, you know, it's just been really fun getting to know certain, like people, like I didn't know you guys very well before I joined. But yeah, we just got eight new kids and it's going to be a great experience this year now that we have, you know, a full team, so thank you.
Thank you. And I guess one last, one question that I'll ask is that if somebody wanted to join the Explorers, what is their, what are the requirements to join of the...
So from the ages of 14 to 21, you just have to be a resident of Wilmington, or if you're a city or town doesn't have an exploring post, we're happy to take you on. Application process, a little bit of a background check, and then we'll be taking you on. We just had our orientation last Sunday, so we're really excited for the year.
Great. Any comments from the board? Mr. Palmer?
Congratulations. I was a police officer for sure up here at the time. And when I got on, there were about 45 of us on the department I was on. There was one woman. I'm looking here now, everyone we're congratulating is a woman, except Sergeant. So it's, the tide has changed. I want to congratulate every, every woman that wants to get involved in law enforcement, fire, it's there for you. It's no longer a man's world.
That's right.
And you're proving it. You're proving it at the young age, you're proving it as you actually get on the department as a, as a sworn in police officer. So congratulations, very, very impressed. Thank you very much.
Ms. Busselli?
Yeah, congratulations. I think this is a wonderful program. I know some kids who have been in it and it's been just life-changing, I would say, for, for a lot of these kids who are now, you know, young adults, I guess you could say. But it's wonderful. Now, do you, do any of you want to become police officers? Is that the path you're taking or you don't know yet? You don't have to know. But it's something you guys think you want to do?
Yes.
So it's great. I mean, that's such a great thing, I mean, to have that opportunity, you know, to get that type of experience and all that stuff. And I think you've set the bar now for going to these competitions, you know.
They seem willing to do it again.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think that's wonderful, absolutely. So congratulations, I love this program and, you know, wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, just the program, like, like the program itself seems awesome.
Yeah.
Like a great opportunity for everyone. I'm glad you guys competed this time. Sounds like it was fun, everyone enjoyed it, and just congrats to all of you. Hope you do well.
Great job.
Yeah. Again, I think everyone's kind of said it all from, from my standpoint. I congratulate you as all, as you've set a bar, first time going to this event and meddling, so I got bad news for you. We're going to, we're going to have high hopes for you next year and we want to see not just the three of yous, but we'd like to see the whole team in here next year. Then tell us about your adventures and hopefully we'll have eight or nine medals coming up or... That's, that's the bar, but let's see what we can do, as long as, you know, I'm a scout leader and scouts, scouts always say, do your best. So as long as you guys, you gals can do your best, that's all we can expect of you.
Have fun.
Mr. Manager?
No, I mean, I think it's an incredible program. You should all be very proud of yourselves. I'm, I want to extend that to your families, who should all be very proud of you, but for being the kind of parents, the kind of families that raise people that want to do this, that's really impressive. And again, to echo the chair, I would hope to see you right here next year.
So with that, we do have, we do have a couple of citations to give out. Ella Cormier, if you could come forward?
Just be careful of the wires.
We'll read this, it says, certificate of celebration presented to Ella R. Cormier on her achievements as a member of Wilmington Police Explorers at the 27th Annual Police Law Enforcement Stations Day, presented this 18th day of August, 2025. Presented by me as chair, but certainly the sentiments of the board. And Eric Slagel, our Time Manager. Hold on, you got it, you got to show your medal too in the picture. There you go. Awesome. Charlotte Warren?
Congratulations.
Again, congratulations. If you could step forward, and again, I'll read just, certificate of celebration presented to Charlotte M. Warren on her achievements as a member of Wilmington Police Explorers at the 27th Annual Police Law Enforcement Stations Day, presented this 18th day of August, 2025. Again, presented by me as the chair, but certainly the sentiments of the board and Eric Slagel, our Time Manager. So congratulations. We're all out of certificates, I'm sorry. Ariana, could you step forward, please? You thought we're, you thought I was serious, right? Again, certificate of celebration presented to Ariana Fasulo on her achievements as a member of Wilmington Police Explorers at the 27th Annual Massachusetts Law Enforcement Stations Day, presented this 18th day of August, 2025. Again, presented by me as chair, but with the sentiments of our entire board. And Mr. Slagel, Eric Slagel, our Time Manager. Congratulations. And congratulations to parents and relatives also of all of our youth. This is a great day of celebration in our town. So thank you all for raising great kids and having a great program.
Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn now. And on a timeout.
Okay, we did want to talk about something else tonight. I'm glad that our officers have stayed. We probably should have done this earlier in the year and I apologize for that we didn't, but one of the things, I don't know about anyone else on the board here, but I know I've been getting calls from residents that talk, talking about the various motorized scooters and skateboards and off-road type things that are, you know, on our tracks and on our, on our sidewalks and more importantly, on our streets. So I just wanted to, if we could give a little presentation on, you know, basically the rules of engagement for these motorized type vehicles and, you know, what we, what you as officers are seeing and what, you know, what we all can do about that, about, you know, preventing any incidents because of this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we appreciate the opportunity to speak about these e-bikes, e-bike safety, especially here in the community of Wilmington. And that's what we want to ensure. We want to ensure the motorists are safe, the pedestrians are safe, and that the users of these e-bicycles are also safe. What I will say is the end of the school year, as we approached the beginning of the school year, the end of the school year, the SRO noted, he had never seen so many e-bikes in one place. It seemed that everybody had received an e-bike over the spring as a gift or purchased one. They were all at the middle school and they rode them that day. So they're definitely, you know, it's a popular item, especially against, with the youth in the community. And as we saw today, today, the lieutenant and I received an update, a legal update from one of the chief legal educators in law enforcement here in Massachusetts, who distributes, distributes these bulletins to law enforcement throughout the Commonwealth. So this isn't just an issue that we're having here in Wilmington. This is prevalent, you know, in the Commonwealth and I would argue out throughout the country as these e-bikes are ever popular. Little confusion, and that's why these bulletins to educate us on, you know, these e-bikes have been coming out in 2022 and the transportation bill, the state acknowledged these e-bikes. Essentially, you can safely ride an e-bike in the community, you need to follow the rules of the road, road as a bicyclist. But the one difference with e-bikes versus bicycles is you can't travel on sidewalks, bicycles can travel on sidewalks. E-bikes are not allowed to it. And by law, e-bikes cannot exceed 20 miles an hour using the electronic. If you're pedaling and you get it to go over 20, it's still an e-bike. However, some of these bikes, they can be manipulated so that they go significantly faster than that 20 miles an hour, which brings them out of the e-bike realm. And they become a little unsafe. But, you know, 16 and under, helmets are required. Recommended strongly for those over that, bicycle helmets. And, you know, like I said, following the rules of the road, going on, going with traffic, not against traffic. Obeying the same traffic laws that everyone else in the community has to obey. And we would encourage, you know, parents who maybe assist in their child in purchasing them, buyers beware a little bit. Do some research on the product to ensure that it actually is an e-bike that is not going to go over 20 miles an hour. And, you know, so it stays in that safe operating range. Because once it goes over, you know, 20 miles an hour, then we get into the realm of, is it a moped? If it's a moped, then it's going to be registered. You have to be 16 or have a learner's permit or a driver's license to operate it here in the Commonwealth. So I would argue that if they say, we purchased this e-bike online and it said it was an e-bike and it was acceptable in every community, to really look at the law and look and make sure that it doesn't go over that 20 miles an hour. But at the end of the day, you know, we're looking to educate the public, you know, we want to see people off the sidewalks. It's dangerous when cars are coming outside of, out of roads, they may not see that person on that sidewalk and these bikes are going pretty quick. We want them to wear helmets, we want them to, you know, operate with the flow of traffic. And, you know, if there's, there's, you know, we have, you know, we definitely do see complaints. Fortunately, knock on wood, we haven't had any serious accidents in this community and I know there have been here in the Commonwealth, some significant accidents. We want to avoid that as much as possible. But it's definitely an area of law that we're trying constantly updating and working with our staff to stay on top of. So we understand why the community would also have some concern, misunderstanding of the law, because we're trying to get a grasp of it as the technology increases, as these bicycles become more prevalent. We are also trying to stay on top of it, so.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything, Officer?
No, just Lieutenant Scott Sensabaugh, just to echo what the deputy chief's saying, it's about safety for us, you see it. The bikes are becoming more common, started around the carnival a little bit, which the officers were directed to, you know, ask kids to step off them, and adults included, which people complied, which is nice. I think the heightened, heightened concern also comes from what we've seen on the news. It's been a couple prevalent news stories recently of 100 bikes going through the tunnel in Boston.
Yes, oh my God.
Drake at San Lols having recurrent issues of bicyclists and mopeds and e-bikes. And it's certainly problematic. At the end of the day, as the deputy said, we just don't want any unfortunate incidents of someone getting severely injured or worse. So I think getting the word out, educating parents, you know, one of the examples that you see often is people will buy these and not realize it's not an e-bike because it goes over 20 and they'll say, well, it's an e-bike. And we're like, well, you were clocked or you were on radar at 30, it's not an e-bike. And that's frustrating for them because they may purchase it as such, not knowing that it isn't. So I think getting the word out is truly helpful.
And these e-bikes, they're, they're not cheap. They're, you know, they're a significant cost, you know, well over a thousand or close to $1,000.
And I think sometimes, like you look at, for example, intersections like Woben and Lowell Street, where you have a really established bike lane, people, you know, I've seen people think, well, gee, it's a, it's a lane, I can do basically whatever I want in it. So you just want to make sure that, you know, I want to make sure that it's safe for everyone, you know, everyone on the road, because you've got people walking, you've got people pushing carriages, you've got people with pets and all of a sudden, you're doing 25 miles an hour, you turn a corner and there's somebody walking there, you know, you could run into problems of, you know, cars, motorcycles, whatever.
They're hard to hear to that point, Mr. Chairman, is when they're driving along and they're so quiet, if someone's walking or about to, you know, step out of a park, you know, pull out of a parking spot or things like that, that's problematic as well because they're not readily heard, often like a bicycle. But when something's moving that fast, you're expecting to hear something motorized.
Yeah, yeah.
Any comments from the board? Gary?
Question?
Question, sure.
If you already stated this, I apologize. E-bikes, do you have to wear a helmet?
So you, it's 16 and under, it's required and it's recommended for over 16, strongly recommended.
Okay. It's not mandatory to over 16, but...
No, it's not mandatory.
Under 16? And you can drive them with a permit?
No, you don't, for an e-bike, which is 20 miles or under, you don't need a permit. So, yeah.
It's part of the problem.
Yeah.
It is.
Ms. Selly?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you because I just got an education on them. I don't have one, haven't been looking into them. Obviously, I see them a lot, so I mean, this was very timely, so I appreciate it being on the agenda. And, you know, I've seen the kids riding them on the sidewalks. And a lot of them, they have some pretty cool helmets on too. They look like they're riding a little motorcycle. But I didn't know all that about the, you know, the 20 miles per hour and all that stuff, but this is great information and I agree, we need to make sure we get that out on, you know, social media and all that stuff, however means, word of mouth, because like I said, that, that was very educational, so I appreciate it.
I just, I think it's a problem. And so I'm glad you guys are doing something about it.
Yeah.
No, absolutely. We're, we're going to engage in a larger scale of public education. And as this memo came out, you know, and all these police departments in the Commonwealth are struggling with this similar issue. But just enforce, educate, safety, and really looking for the cooperation of the parents of some of these juveniles to also at their house, educate them on, on these safety rules, so that not only they are safe, other people are safe as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
You need more support from the state too, through the registry and everything else.
And they tried to clarify it under the transportation bill that appeared, and I think just the technology and the cost and the prevalence, it goes quicker than maybe the legislature really can.
Yeah, for sure.
They're not cheap, no.
For sure.
And again, I want to thank you gentlemen for coming in. It was, you know, I think what we should do is, is that maybe in the spring of next year, maybe have you guys come in again and give a talk and just, you know, kind of say, what, you know, what, if there's any new laws, regulations, or any enforcement activities going on, or anything that, you know, that you can do to help... that, you know, that you can do to help educate us, educate the public, so.
Absolutely. We'd appreciate that opportunity to come back in the spring and discuss it. It's, you know, as we see these bike lanes, as we see, you know, bike safety, you know, we're trying to stay on top of it. It was brought to my attention today, and I wasn't exactly sure, and we will certainly want to educate the public, which we will engage in a campaign soon. But you speak about the Woben Street and Lowell Street intersection. I wasn't exactly sure what the green boxes were.
[laughing]
And my, and traffic officer explained how the bicyclist are to use those green boxes, and we will certainly try to educate the public on the boxes. They're extremely valuable for safety, but I would venture to guess that, as the deputy chief, I wasn't exactly sure how those green boxes were supposed to be utilized. I don't expect that the community probably completely understands how they are supposed to be utilized. So we'll engage in an education campaign for the community to really update people on the proper uses and the expectations of those.
And Mr. Manager?
Oh, good. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, gentlemen. We, again, we, you know, we do thank our law enforcement each and every day, you know, both police, fire, first responders, and certainly our military. So you guys are exemplary, great examples of the Wilmington Police Force. So we want to thank you very much for coming out tonight, and your offices that were here early. It's just great examples of our public service. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate it. We are a younger police department than we've been in the past, but they're enthusiastic and they're very good interacting in the community and responding to calls for need. So thank you very much.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, again, my, the 7:45 appointment that is scheduled in the agenda deals with the Bizell School. I made the decision not to have that on tonight's agenda. I figured, number one, we were down one selectment, and also, if you notice that the room fills up real quick, and to try to get the middle room on short notice, I didn't think it was fair to WCTV and our, you know, staff to try to arrange that. So we will do that at a, at a different event, a different meeting. But if anybody under public comments wanted to talk on it, I'm certainly willing to listen to that when we get to public comments. That said, communications, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our first communication is a letter from Shonda Green, Department Secretary for the Department of Telecommunications and Cable regarding Comcast cable communications license expiration. So our license expires on January 27, 2028. So we will be reinvigorating our cable committee, because both this license and our license with Verizon are coming up on expiration in roughly the same time. So we will be, we'll be having renewed discussions with Comcast and Verizon, our cable contracts.
Okay.
The next communication is a letter from Ann Marie Hill to the town clerk regarding the resignation as a member of the Wilmington Housing Authority. So I'll use this platform to reach out to anybody in the community who has an interest in service. We are short a couple of members of the Wilmington Housing Authority at this time, and so we'd be looking for qualified applicants to come in and be willing to spend some time helping that, that the housing authority take their work.
If I may, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank Ms. Hill for her service to the Housing Authority and the other members as well, but want to thank her especially for the service that she did provide to the town when, while she was on the Housing Authority.
The next is a communication from Carol E. West, video franchise Verizon FiOS TV, regarding a programming change. So on or after August 15, HBO Family, Movie Max, Outer Max, and Thriller Max will no longer be available on the FiOS TV lineup. This is a provider-driven change. So subscribers have already been notified individually, but if you have some concerns, you should reach out to Verizon. Our next, a letter is communication from Carrie Morris, government regulatory affairs, regarding Comcast Xfinity TV programming change. Effective August 15, 2025, Warner Brothers Discovery will discontinue HBO Family, Thriller Max, linear TV channels. They will be available on demand or with a Cinemax subscription. Again, this is for the Xfinity streaming. And that is our communications, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have board to consider?
Yes. So our board to consider, board to consider approving early voting hours for the special town election to be held Tuesday, September 16, 2025. So we have the town clerk who's here. The initial proposal was for early voting during business hours, starting Tuesday, September 2, going through Wednesday, September 10, and also including 9 to 5 on Saturday, September 6. It has come to the attention of, I think, members of the board and from the public, that we could actually extend that to the 12th, if it is the will of the board to do so. So instead of ending on Wednesday, September 10, it would end on Friday, September 12, at 12:30, because it would be during regular business hours. So.
I'd like to make a motion to extend it to Friday, September 12. And I would also ask that you can explain why we can't extend it into Saturday, just so the public knows.
Sure. So we, in order to comply with the regulations from the state, we have to terminate early voting two business days before the election. And so according to the state, the 12th is the last day that we could do early voting. And initially, there was some time left in the, in the, in the calendar to allow for early processing, if necessary. But I think the clerk and I have talked, and she believes that they can do the processing on day of, and don't need to have those days for early processing.
I'd second that.
Okay, well, I'd like to do discussion, and if I may, I don't know, would you like to comment on, on the elections?
Sure.
If I may, I think that's appropriate. I could do that.
Sure.
Sure.
So we, obviously, we have the ballots. The people have been requesting mailed out ballots. They can do that. They've been requesting absentee ballot, voting at my counter, they can do that. Every legal scenario with the elections have different legal requirements. So while absentee ballot, voting at my counter has been going on forever, there aren't, as soon as we get the ballots, there are no restrictions. However, early voting happened in June of 2022, and they made a change to the election law. We didn't start using it till last spring. I wanted to try to see if it would increase voter turnout. And it wasn't a hardship on my staff, so why not? It doesn't hurt. So we really didn't participate in it until last year, and the public seems to really like it. We are now open late on Tuesdays, so they can come in till 7 o'clock on the two Tuesdays. That Saturday that we're open, we have to be there anyway for last day to register to vote. So it's not an increased cost to the town of Wilmington. So why not be open till 5? So, and as I said, I don't know what the exact number is at the end, because we received ballots today and we mailed out ballots today. But we have over 100 ballots that have already been received in.
Wow.
Already been voted. And I think people are really enjoying the, everyone has a busy lifestyle, double, double income, children, extracurricular activities. They're stretched pretty thin. So this is an opportunity to let them participate, everyone participate, and not, if they can't be there on that Tuesday, which it is a Tuesday, they can be here on a Saturday or a late night on a Tuesday.
Right.
So just for the public's information, the in-person elections on Tuesday, the 16th?
The 16th, yes.
And?
It's like a 8 to 8, as our inhabitants bylaws require.
And if people want to vote in person on that day, the locations?
Yes, and I anticipate the last major building project of this kind was a turnout of over 5,000 people. I don't, again, I don't have that number. I know it's a little over 5,000. So that's what I'm basing my model after. That's what we've done with the town meeting, and we're doing it also with the election. So we've increased our ballot, you know, ballots that we've purchased to maintain, make sure we have enough available, because I do anticipate a larger turnout than we normally have.
Sure.
People are very passionate about this subject, so no matter what side you're on, they're very strongly believe in what they want to see happen. So I think that's going to drive people out, and we've prepared for it. So I feel confident that we'll be, we'll be in good shape on Election Day.
And the locations for in-person voting?
It will be at the senior center. That will be 1, 2, and 3. And here at the town hall will be 4, 5, and 6.
And that's from 8 o'clock in the morning until 8 o'clock at night?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the, comments from the board?
Nope.
If I could say something for the
Absolutely.
In-person early voting, in that law change, it also requires 150-foot, no political activity. So if I wanted, I just wanted to let the public know that, so they don't feel, as though, in the past, they didn't have that. So you could, you could come in on early voting and do that, but in 2022, it changed. So we are marking our 150-foot marks in both locations to let the political groups understand where they can, they can hold signs and try to sway the public.
Okay, so we had a motion that was seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor of the extending the early voting? I guess it's from Tuesday, September 2 through Friday, September 12?
Exclusion of the Sunday, yep.
Yeah, Monday would be business, business days.
Business hours plus Saturday the 6th.
Saturday the 6th, yep.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Nope. One abstained, one absent, so four.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Mr. Manager?
Okay, Mr. Chair. Next, a board to consider request of Mallory Dogiello, Marketing Communication Coordinator, writing municipal light department, to use municipal parking lot on Sunday, August 24, 92 for electric vehicle car show, and to place promotional signs on the town common, August 17 through the 24. This was already, had already come before the board. They were doing, the parking lot was under construction, so they couldn't do it. So they chose a different date, and so this would just be revoting to allow them for that second date.
Is there a motion to allow the activity? So moved, so moved, second?
Second for discussion?
Second for discussion.
I know you just said that, but I noticed, obviously, it's paved now. It'll be okay, cured, the whole thing by the time this happens?
Yeah, and the, the, the construction team knows that this was proposed.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Nobody opposed, so 4-0.
Next, a board to consider request of Sherri Alameda, for residents of Lakavas Circle, to have a neighborhood block party Saturday, September 13, from noon till 10 p.m. Rain dates summer September 14, from noon to 10 p.m.
So moved.
Motion, second. Any discussion? No issues with police, fire, neighbors?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor? No opposed?
Next is a board to consider request of Amy Gray, Wilmington High School Boys Basketball Boosters, to use the municipal parking lot in Millsx Ave for fundraising car wash, Sunday, Sunday, September 28, 2025, from 9 a.m. to 1 p.m.
So moved.
No conflicts. Okay. Motion was made, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? 4-0.
All right. Next is a board to consider request of Gabriel Scholl, to place a menorah on the gazebo at Town Common for Hanukkah from December 11 through December 22, 2025. If folks remember, Scholl had brought forward the same request last year, and it was, it was done very tastefully, and I think it was pretty well attended. So this is a one that we allowed for the first time last year, but I did think it went very well.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? 4-0.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, I brought my family to us, yeah, civic process.
Did you, sir, if you'd like, you want to go to the microphone for a second?
No, we're good. I did it all last year.
Okay.
Thank you letter last year, I sent?
Yes.
Yes, we did. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Much appreciated.
Good one.
Board to consider number 11, request by Carrie L. DeProffio, Wilmington High School Football Boosters, to use the municipal parking lot in Millsx Ave for fundraising car wash on Saturday, June 14, 2026, from 9 to 1.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Getting on the calendar early.
You look lonely over there, Jason.
Yeah, right?
Can you move over there?
Board to consider number 12, board to consider request of Marcy Mulcahy, Wilmington High School Boys Soccer Boosters, to use municipal parking lot in Millsx Ave for fundraising car wash on Sunday, September 13, 2026, from 9 a.m. to 12 p.m., with rain date of summer September 28, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Those are all of our board to considers, Mr. Chair.
Okay, public comments. Anybody from the public like? If you could just give your name and address for the record?
Rob Fassulo, 28 Marjorie Road. First of all, thank you guys for this meeting. This is awesome. So I appreciate it from.
Should be proud of your daughter.
Yeah, her job.
All right, so, Mr. Chair, I've actually got a gift for you. Can I bring it up to you? It's a stack of papers.
Watching.
Do they have dead presidents on them? Then I don't want them. Okay.
So that's a, that's a report dated March of 2025. It was highly touted in recent times on social media, and it is fairly critical. They're saying it's fairly critical of our schools, Wilmington Street. There are
Excuse me, can I just interrupt for just a second?
Sure.
Just in, just in the interest of time, we are limited public comments to five minutes.
Okay. I will take two. So there's, there's a short list on there, a lot of trivial things. But I'm kind of curious, has, and if you guys can't answer it, I understand, maybe you could get a whole, get, reach out to the parents, because there's a lot of kids in that school. Have the things that are addressed in that report been taken care of? And the big question I have, because I do, I have a little one still in the school, are these buildings safe? The buildings, are they safe? I'm curious if the town has a position on that. Thank you.
Does any, leave it be?
I think it's under advisement.
Yeah, we'll take that under advisement, but I would say that we haven't heard anything current about the schools, but school's in session, so we'll, nobody said anything.
I just wanted to know where the report, is that something online, Rob, or?
That's from the state.
From the state?
Apparently, they did an assessment of.
Okay.
Dennis was aware of it.
He was better.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I was just saying, if I wanted to just see it.
Yeah.
But I would also just say, I think, you know, Dennis would be the best person to answer that question on the safety of the schools.
Just for the record, the document presented is an indoor air quality assessment, Woben Street School, as of March 2025, present, again, as Mr. Fassulo said, prepared by Mass Department of Public Health.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Sir?
Mark Dixon, 62 Washington Ave. So I sent over an email, I think, the other day. So obviously, with the, you know, discourse in town about, around the schools and everything, you know, I was trying to look around a little bit, see what we have for programs, for seniors, anything like that. So there is the Abatement Senior Work Off Program. And for, at least for fiscal year 2025, the property tax liability reduction as part of that is a maximum of $1,500, based on volunteering up to 100 hours with the town, minimum wage $15 an hour. So that program is related to the national laws, Chapter 59, Section 5K. So, you know, in looking that up, I saw that there has been an update to that as of January 2, 2024. It's increased a little bit. Maximum of $2,000 in the tax reduction, based on volunteering up to 125 potentially, and $15 an hour. So, you know, if it is feasible to take into consideration to kind of increase that, I think it could do a lot to help our seniors in town. I think it would be a very helpful thing to kind of, can lower the temperature, I guess you could say, of some of the discourse in town.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Hi, Bonnie Smith, 30 Marion Street, also Chair of the Historical Commission. I initially came tonight to talk about the Basell School, but I see that it was tabled, so that's fine. But I just wanted to mention maybe something that you hadn't considered yet. We at the museum are always concerned about the environment of the museum that's not climatically controlled to protect our very fragile artifacts. I know Matt is really interested in this. We've used grant money to get some monitoring devices over the past few months. One of the considerations that I don't know that you've talked about is we could, because the Basell School is climatically controlled, we may be able to take a portion of it, or a couple of rooms of it, to move our artifacts to there to be protected. We do have quite a few fragile artifacts at the museum, and because of the electrical system at the museum, we're unable to upgrade or put. We have one air conditioner upstairs in Matt's office, and that's pretty much loading up the electrical system at the, so just an idea, just a thought, throwing around, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to the Historical Commission for the programs that they put on.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Sir?
Hi, everybody. I'm Sam Perkins. I'm the Director of WCTV. I think I know each of you at this point, a little bit at least. For those who don't know, WCTV is the Community Access Station and Community Media Center here in town. I want to start by saying that we've always viewed our relationship with the town as a partnership. I think we're all in it for the community of Wilmington, doing everything that we do. And so I'm here in the nature and in the spirit of that partnership. I'm here speaking tonight during open comment to formally request that WCTV be placed on the agenda for an upcoming select board meeting so we can have a full discussion about the state of public access and the potential future of the station. We'd originally been urged to ask to be on the agenda for the special Tuesday Select Board Meeting back in July, then was sort of told that it would be more appropriate to be on today's agenda. I spoke with Frank on Friday, the 8th, going over sort of what would be, what I'd be talking about on the agenda. I went away on vacation, and we sort of learned last Friday that we wouldn't be on the agenda. Myself, our board, which had our regular Board of Directors meeting scheduled for tonight, and we rescheduled that, many parents, many students that are involved, many community members that are involved, had cleared space in their time to come and speak about WCTV. I know all of you have gotten a lot of letters from people that care about WCTV. I, myself, just being transparent, cut short the first vacation that I had had in two years to make sure that I could be here tonight. That vacation came after working 90 of the last 96 days at WCTV. I understand that wanting the full board to be present, I understand all the factors going on, the conversations around the Basell and other buildings, feeling like it's more appropriate to figure that out before us coming before the board here. But unfortunately, it left us feeling like we were an afterthought, and it's not necessarily a new experience that we've had or feeling that we've had. That said, I want to acknowledge the great dialogue I've had with Town Manager Slagle over the last year or so about the future of WCTV, about the partnerships, collaborations. He's definitely, I think, the most concerned and committed and open to exploring ways that we can ensure the public access station survives than any town official I know of in Wilmington's history. So I don't go back super long, but everything I've been told by other people, I really appreciate the dialogue. I do want to just point out, WCTV, we're doing more than we've ever done before. And I'm aware we've got five minutes. Practice this, it's under five minutes. And we're doing more than any other access station in the state, and that's not hyperbole. We have trackable metrics on that. Last year, we produced over 1,100 videos on the community of Wilmington in one capacity or another. Town meetings, youth programs, events, cinematic style pieces, in a way that no other station is doing. And we treat everything that we cover like it is a Hollywood production. We go all out for it. Our youth program had more than 100 kids come through it during this past year, interns from Shawshank Tech, Wilmington High. We had a movie premiere for a two-hour feature-length movie that our kids have done. The point is, we do a lot for the community. Prior to 2023, WCTV had never done more than 300 videos in a year. So 300 to 1,100. From everything we could track, and polling, and checking everything, there was no other access station in the state in communities up to five times our size that did more than 400 videos in 2024. So we're really going all out for this community. What does that mean? Well, if we were a private production company, even by the most conservative estimates, and the bottom-third level rates, which we do way better than bottom-third level quality work, but the market rate of what we did for Wilmington was more than $3.2 million, would be the market rate for what we did. We're far and away the biggest marketer of the Wilmington Public Schools, the community, events. We don't get any public funding. Funding doesn't come from taxpayers, doesn't come from the schools. It comes from cable companies, only cable, Comcast and Verizon. In an era when public access is struggling to stay relevant, we are, following is growing. We had more than 5.4 million views in 2024 on our content. That's saying something for a community of 22,000 people. Wilmington, right now, is a community that doesn't have a youth center, rec center, places that kids can really go once they get to be high school or older middle school, feel safe, secure, be themselves without having to spend money, except for us. We fill a lot of gaps. We have so many kids coming through, learning valuable skills, learning video production, which is needed in today's climate, not just for people that want to make movies, but any walk of life. We're the only place that offers that in town. It's not taught in the public schools right now. But we're at a breaking point. As I said, we don't get public funding from taxpayers. Our funding a decade ago was more than $560,000 from Comcast and Verizon. This year, it's looking like it's going to come in at under $450,000. That's a pretty steep drop, and that's before you factor in inflation. Our costs for keeping the doors open and the lights on have gone through the roof. If you look in that same time period, utilities have tripled for us, our rent has gone up, and then the cost of equipment is through the roof. To put hard numbers on that, we need a new broadcast server to continue to send a signal out over cable, even though most of our viewership is online, to abide by our contracts, it needs to go out on cable. Eight years ago was the last time we bought a server, it was $29,000, for a very middle-of-the-road, no frills, but does everything we needed to do broadcast server. Right now, middle-of-the-road, no thrills, does everything we need to do broadcast service, $59,000. Last year, we had to buy a new streaming camera to cover live events. We got a four-year-old model, not used, but four years old. It cost us $3,600. We were looking at trying to get a second one as a backup, or to be able to cover multiple events. Just from last year to this year, that same camera model, which is now five years old, $4,300. That's in a year. So the costs are staggering. We've cut everything we can possibly cut. We've explored every avenue we can. We brought in $40,000 in sponsorship money and paid production services last year. We never brought in more than two before that. We've applied for every grant we can. We continue to apply for every grant we can. A decade ago, WCTV had 12 employees. We're down to four full-time and one very part-time. That's not by choice, that's out of necessity. Our four full-time regularly work over 50, and many times over 60 hours a week. We're all on salaries, so we don't get anything extra for that. We all wear many hats, not to make it about me, but just as an example, I'm the Executive Director, I'm the Youth Director, I'm one of our lead videographers and producers. I shoot three to four things a week. I run our social media. And that's not an exception. It's all the employees are like that. I have to order people to take days off. So the point is, we're doing everything we can to bootstrap on our own and raise money on our own. And this isn't a WCTV issue, it's a public access issue. There's dozens of stations across the state that don't know how they're going to make payroll after 2025 ends. We're not at that point, but we're probably two years away from being at that point, given the cost, how much things keep going up. If we go away, Wilmington will have two choices. No public access, no coverage of any of meetings, Friday night football games, youth events, the community in general, or create a town department, which is very expensive. It's going to cost about 10 times as much, and you're going to get about a tenth of the coverage. And that's not hyperbole. You need to look no further than Tewksbury. You can talk to Brian Dorrington, the director there. They're a town department. Brian's amazing. Town departments are very expensive. All they do is cover, and I don't want to say all they do, but they cover municipal meetings, occasional live broadcasts. They have a staff of two. Their costs are significantly higher than ours are. They don't have a youth program, they don't have community programming, any of that stuff. I understand that the town has many large projects, many financial issues at hand. I get that those take precedence completely. I respect it. I wouldn't want to be in your guy's shoes making these decisions, but I do just want to ask that we be on the agenda sooner than later and have a public discussion on potential paths forward, potential ways around it. I know buildings are being discussed. We've put our hat in the ring for those. We don't know how long that whole process is going to take. There's a streaming bill that's finally making progress on Beacon Hill, which is great, but the reality is that's probably several years away from us seeing anything if it does pass, and several more years, we're just not going to be able to operate at the same capacity that we're at. So I want to thank you guys for your time once again, and just say that I would really like for us to be on the agenda sooner than later, because we're all in this together. I think we're all on the same side, and I think it's, we're not entitled to anything from the town. We're not entitled to any support, but we'd like you guys, and we'd like the town, to be able to be fully informed on what's going on in public access, so that you all can make the most informed opinion on any potential partnerships, collaborations, anything like that. So thank you for your time.
Sam, I would like to say that, number one, I applaud WCTV for all their work. You and I did have conversations. You've also had conversations with the manager and the assistant manager. There were reasons beyond just lack of full capacity not to have you in tonight, but there were other reasons that we did discuss, and we are looking at different avenues for WCTV. So I just, I just kind of took it as a little slam that you said, hey, we were going to be on the agenda, and then we weren't. You know, just want to let you know that, yes, you know, we do plan on having you there, but again, it was planned. It isn't a plan, and I know the manager and I will be in touch with you with hopefully not just a plan to have you on an agenda, but more, maybe a more feasible plan for the future. So I just want to let everyone know that it wasn't just a haphazard decision not to have you in tonight. And I appreciate the fact that, yes, I understand you did cut your vacations short, as you say, and you did reschedule or rearrange your Board of Directors meeting, so.
It wasn't intended as a slam, so I'm sorry if it came across as that. It was more just stating that it was important to us to be on.
No, I just want to make sure that the residents realize that it wasn't just a once, you know, hey, now we'll just have you on a different week, don't worry about it. You know, we are trying to work something that may be long-term beneficial to WCTV, and it may work out, it might not, but we can have that discussion. And I know the manager will be heavily involved in that. So, any other board members? I don't know if anyone, Mr. DePalma?
To the chair. Sam, have you been in contact with Barry Feingold, the Senator, and Representative Robinson over the streaming bill?
Yes, so we've reached out to Senator Feingold many times. We've had him into the studio. I would say non-committal. Robertson, we've had a lot of talks with. He has said that he is in support of the streaming bill, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And we will have you on a future agenda, and it won't be six months from now, it'll be a lot sooner than that. Any other public comments? Okay, announcements? Any announcements?
I just want to request that the members of the board wear an item of gold clothing or ribbon or something for our meetings in September for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Sure. One thing that I do want to announce is that I know that they've talked about, the state's talked about the sale of state-owned land in Wilmington, and just want to let people know that there's that two-and-a-half acre land on Salem Street that's up right in the North Reading Line over near Martin's Landing. That's going to be coming on an auction by a local auctioneer on Wednesday, September 10th. I just, you know, people are saying, well, when are they going to do public land? And that, that's not for years downstream, whatever. It's happening, so at least from one piece of land in Wilmington. So anyhow, any new business from our board?
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Manager, if you could do important dates, please?
Sure. Important dates. So through October 5th, we have the Harvest Market, the Town Common on Sundays from 10:00 to 1:00. Reminder that on September 1st, we have Labor Day, so town offices will be closed. September 2nd, there's a Finance Committee public hearing at Town Hall regarding the special town meeting. That's in our auditorium at 7:00 on the 2nd. September 8th, we have our next Select Board meeting here, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00. September 10th, there's brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 8:00 to 2:00. September 13th, there's brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 9:00 to 4:00. Importantly, as we've been discussing, September 13th, there is a special town meeting at Wilmington High School in the Cushing Gymnasium at 9:00 a.m. regarding the elementary school project, followed by September 16th, the special town election. As was discussed earlier, polls will be open from 8:00 to 8:00. Precincts 1 through 3 are at the Senior Center, and 4 through 6 are here at the Old Town Hall. September 17th, there will be a Welcome to Wilmington reception at the Wilmington Library. So any new resident, we encourage you to come down to the library. There'll be folks you can talk about, talk to about your new move into Wilmington experience. Then September 22nd, we have a Select Board meeting here at Town Hall, Room 9, at 7:00 p.m. October 13th is Columbus Day. Town offices will be closed. And then October 14th, we have a Select Board meeting here at Town Hall, Room 9, at 7:00 p.m. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I believe school starts August 27th?
Hard to believe.
So we just want to, you know, I guess on behalf of the school opening up, just be wary that there's going to be buses, there's going to be kids walking, kids bicycles, and want to welcome teachers, students, and staff back to Wilmington High, Wilmington Schools. Would like to do, lastly, do a salute for our service. We'd like to salute Mr. Al Muse, who joined the United States Navy on September 22nd, 1955, assigned to the, quote, "Green Ponds" VA 42 Attack Squadron, and was honorably discharged on September 16th, 1959, in Virginia Beach. Al was awarded the Good Conduct Medal. Al and his wife settled in Wilmington over 50 years ago. Al retired from the Wilmington Fire Department in April 1998, after 28 years of service. So on behalf of the town of Wilmington, I'd like to commend and salute Mr. Muse for his service to our nation. With that, at just about 8:30, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? No? Good night, everybody.
Good night.